Okay.
Thanks. Okay, with that, we can get the meeting started. So I'd like to call to order the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, November 29th, 2022 at 7:02 PM. We do have a quorum here, myself, Pat, and Lorraine. We do have Lisa and Jim online. And even though they're online, under the village's video conferencing and teleconferencing law, they are allowed to be voting members tonight. So the first order on the agenda is approval of minutes. There are no minutes to approve, so that's easy. Next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is a time for anybody who would like to bring up something that isn't already on the agenda to do so. Okay, I will entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
No move.
Motion by Pat. Second, Lisa?
Yes.
Second by Lisa. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? The next item on the agenda is to continue the public hearing for special permit number 2022-4575. Maguire Chevrolet Cadillac located at 35 Cinema Drive, tax parcel number 46.1-66-5.12, is seeking to update the existing building with improvements to the interior showroom areas, service area, and body shop. John Snyder representing Maguire Chevrolet Cadillac will review the proposed changes, which include a new entrance to the west facade and a second floor for the new Cadillac showroom. Nobody from Maguire is here tonight. We do have the short EAF and a resolution in front of you if we do want to do the Seeker resolution.
I did speak to Bear before the holiday, and he said they would probably be ready for the first meeting December to go over some of the changes.
To let them know that it will be the only meeting in December. So if they're not ready for the first one, see you in January. I don't know if folks got, did you, this did go out in the email.
The part one of the short EAF was part of either this email or the last one.
Okay. As long as people are okay with it, we can go over it. If folks didn't get a chance to go over it and want some time to go over it independently, we can do it at the next meeting.
I'm fine with going over it. I looked at it.
Are you okay with going over it, Jim?
Um, yeah, sure. I'm sitting next to a desktop, so I'm looking at.
Okay, there you go. Okay, so yeah, we, so then in that case, we can go over it. Everyone's got the information on in front of my, won't read off all the part one information because it's pretty much the same as the information I just wrote off on the agenda. But we can go over the questions on it, starting with one, obviously. And if anyone has any questions or thinks one of the things should be different on it, let us know. And I'll give a, give a couple of seconds for Lisa and Jim, just in case, because I know there's a delay sometimes online. So, "Does the proposed action only involve the legislative adoption of a planned local ordinance, administrative rule, or regulation?" No. "Does the proposed action require a permit, approval, or funding from any other government agency?" No. "The acreage is listed there." I don't, does that seem accurate? I assume, okay. "Check all land uses that occur on, are adjoining, or near the proposed action, commercial." Is there anything else near that? I know it backs up against...
I guess define near.
Yeah, that's the thing.
It's, I guess that is kind of landlocked by itself there.
Unless you go across the roads either way.
It's about the only thing that's really contiguous to the commercial.
Yeah, I would agree.
"Is the proposed action, A, a permitted use under the zoning regulations?" Yes. "B, consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan?" Yes. "Is the proposed action consistent with the predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape?" Yes. "Is the site of the proposed action located in or does it adjoin a state-listed critical environmental area?" No. "Will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels?" No. "Are public transportation services available at or near the site of the proposed action?" Yes. "Are any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site of the proposed action?" Yes. "Does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements?" Yes. "Will the proposed action connect to an existing public or private water supply?" Yes. "Will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities?" Yes. "Does the site contain, or is it substantially contiguous to a building, archaeological site, or district which is listed on the National or State Register of Historic Places, or that has been determined by the Commissioner of the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places?" No. "Is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Site Inventory?" No. "Does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or any other water bodies regulated by a federal, state, or local agency?" No. "Would the proposed action physically alter or encroach into any existing wetland or water body?" No. For the Nissan one, there was that little kind of stream or creek behind it for the, so there was a park in the southeast corner. I'm not sure it was actually designated as a wetland. I don't think it was, okay.
It was just a drainage area.
Yeah, okay. Okay. "Identify the typical habitat types that occur on or are likely to be found on the project site." They checked urban. "Does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animal or associated habitats listed by the state or federal government as threatened or endangered?" No. "Is a project site located in a 100-year floodplain?" No. "Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources?" Yes. "Will the stormwater discharges flow into adjacent properties?" No. I've got that all figured out.
Most of their stormwater flow right through the stormwater system, right down on Cinema Drive.
Okay. "Will the stormwater discharges be directed to established conveyance systems?" Yes. And then it just says right there, yeah, connecting to existing village stormwater systems. "Does the proposed action include construction or any other activities that would result in the impalement of water or other liquids?" No. "Has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been a location of an active or closed solid waste management facility?" No. "Has the site of the proposed action or adjoining property been the subject of remediation for hazardous waste?" No.
Is it date right?
What's that?
Is it date right?
What'd you say?
Is it date right?
Oh, May 31st, 2021. Haven't stated the date on there, huh? I mean, he could have signed it a long while ago. Yeah, Lisa.
I didn't hear what, what you said. I was trying to bring up the document. I'm sorry, on number four. When it says adjoining, obviously, there's no adjoining, but what do we consider near when it comes to like residential? So the residential is apartments. Is that not considered residential?
It would be, well, it would be up to your interpretation. I generally would figure whatever property is contiguous to it, which there is a residential property.
And that's what I was thinking, because some of the other ones, they actually specifically, you know, call out, you know, some of it is, you know, adjoining or near. Some of it actually says adjacent. And if it said adjacent, that might mean something different. But in this case, yeah.
I think the other one, when we did the Nissan, it was adjoining. Yeah, so that was different. Okay, so it's just commercial, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so then we can move on to part two. Or do we, we don't have to go on more please, do we? First part, I think, so, okay. Okay, so then we can move on to part two. So I will read off the questions here. And if anybody thinks it's something different than what I say, go ahead and raise your hand. So, "Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?" No. "Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?" No. "Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?" No. "Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?" No. "Will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?" No. "Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?" No. "Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies?" No. Or moderate. Public or private wastewater treatment facilities? No. "Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?" No. "Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna?" No. "Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?" No. "And will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?" No. Did anyone have any thing they wanted to bring up on that? Okay. So with that said, folks should have a resolution in front of them. Did you email it out to you?
I did not.
Do you want me to go put it up?
Yeah, can you go put it up on the screen real quick? Lisa and Jim, Mike's gonna put the resolution, the Seeker resolution up on the, up on the screen.
Okay.
Just so you have it in front of you as we go over it. Yeah, I'll let you do it. Never realized, love that ticking clock.
Did he make it open?
Yeah, he just, he just joined up. I forgot he had to join first.
Finally.
Yep, I see it.
Yep. Sorry about that.
So this is the Village of Lansing Planning Board Resolution for Seeker Review of Special Permit Number 2022-4575, adopted on November 29th, 2022. This matter involves consideration of the following proposed action. Special Permit Number 2022-4575 for the proposal by Maguire Chevrolet Cadillac located at 35 Cinema Drive, tax parcel number 46.1-6-5.12, to update the existing building with improvements to the interior showroom areas, service area, and body shop. On November 29th, 2022, the Village of Lansing Planning Board, in performing the lead agency function for its independent and uncoordinated, I always find that funny, environmental review in accordance with Article 8 of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, or Seeker, determined that the proposed action provided for herein is an unlisted action in accordance with Seeker. Thoroughly reviewed the short environmental assessment form and any and all other documents prepared and submitted with respect to this proposed action and its environmental review. Completed its thorough analysis of the potential relevant areas of environmental concern to determine if the proposed action may have a significant adverse impact on the environment, including the criteria identified in 6 NYCRR Section 617.7C, and completed the short EAF. And now therefore be it resolved as follows. So we've got two options, that we find this a negative declaration, or that we find it a positive declaration. I will entertain, I will entertain a motion to find this a negative declaration. Motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Lisa. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And then we can move on to part three of the short EAF. There were no moderate to large impacts checked in part two, so I don't think there's anything to fill out here. So I will sign the part three here. Give it to you, Mike.
Yeah, I've got it right here.
And we will keep the public hearing for the special permit open until Maguire comes back, either in December or January for their next set of stuff. The next item on the agenda is to continue the public hearing for special permit number 2022-4629. This is, we talked about this last time, residents at 991 Cayuga Heights Road, tax parcel number 43.1-1-29. As per Village Code, Section 145-39D2D, a special permit is required. And I see Zach's online, so, hey Zach, do you want to fill us in on kind of what's happened in between the last meeting and tonight?
Yeah, so it all happened pretty, pretty recently. I got an email today and an invoice from the arborist who did a tree count. And I did send that over to Mike, the code officer. And so it's been, it's formalized. I just, I don't know if I could send it to somebody now if you needed to see that, but there was 151 tree units on the property. And then the other, the more concerning thing for me was, I shouldn't say, well, more pertinent was the septic. I called the Tompkins County Board of Health, and they were able to size the unit. And I had two options. That email from the engineer was sent to Mike as well. And in summary, there was two options. The first option was, I can do a conversion permit, which ultimately, I don't know if you guys are familiar with what that is. I don't want to be redundant, but I learned that it was a, basically, they, they, they come and do a test hole to, in the yard, they dig a hole to, as long as they know there's a place to put a replacement septic, if the current septic was not big enough to accommodate this new addition, per se. So there's that option. And then the other option was, and I don't, I guess this would be more your decision than theirs, but the engineer said that that would not be necessary if I, I'm paraphrasing from what was said in the email, if I was willing to wait to get a certificate of occupancy once I connected to the public sewer. So, and which both, I like both options. You know, I'm amenable to both options. I think they're, they're both understandable. And, you know, I don't know much about the public sewer at this time. So, and I also know that, you know, these, my project will, I don't know how long that will take. So if, if I were to be done with it, I don't know, in six months, and the sewer was not around, I would consider doing the conversion permit, if you guys were amenable to that. And if the sewer was, is, I don't know when that's aimed to be complete, you know, maybe, maybe there's a chance that that would be done before I even had the ability to utilize the addition. So then I would just connect to the sewer. So that, that's, that's what I've got thus far.
Did the projection for the sewer, just so you know, Zach, they're looking at, I believe, next fall or the end of the summer of next year. That's if everything goes perfectly, which, I mean, that's the projected time. Yeah, I got that email from Scott Freiberger. And he kind of sums it up, just like you did. It's, it's the two options. If you are looking to get your CFC and have someone living in that, in that bedroom above the garage, then you would have to do his first option, which would be the existing septic system. If it does work out that either you're delayed or you're not in that much of a hurry, then of course you can wait and hook to the actual sewer. So I'm basically just reiterating what you just said.
Yeah, Mike, and by the way, I'm sorry, because I didn't see your name on the, on the list. So I didn't realize you were there. Apologize.
No, that's fine. I mean, it's, whatever the planning board would like to do as far as the trees go, that's completely up to you. As far as the whole septic sewer, that can be put into a resolution for the special permit, that either you have one of the two options, and then I would handle it through the building permit. So would that be okay, Natalie, to do it that way?
Have an or condition, like either get a conversion permit or...
Yeah, some have a condition in there that if you, however you want to word it, if the sewer is available and you hook up to it, I can grant the CFC. Otherwise, it has to be, the septic system has to be approved by the office.
Yeah, that's fine by me.
Um, okay. Do you remember when we did the calculation last time, how many tree units were supposed to be there?
Thirty.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So...
Thought it was, I thought it was 51, honestly.
It was right around 50, yeah. So that clearly isn't an issue. So there, it was the one piece that we discussed last time about street trees, too. And so I didn't know if folks had thought about that more. Zach, if you had talked to anyone about that?
Fifty-one.
Tree units.
Because he is over an acre of land.
It's 30 per acre.
Thirty per acre.
Yeah.
Right, so times that by 1.7.
Yep, okay. Clearly, you have enough. So, yeah, so there was the outstanding piece that we talked about last time with, with some street trees as part of the new tree law.
You know, honestly, I, I didn't put too much thought into that. I like the idea of just planting some trees there. I, I think that would be, that'd be great. I think a win-win. But I, and I, and I didn't really quite grasp the concept of the tree bank, if that's, if I'm even right on, on the right track there.
So, so there's two different things. So the tree bank is for people who, for whatever reason, can't actually get up to the minimum required tree units for their property. There's a...
Oh, I see.
Yeah, there's that, which, which, you know, you, you are fine with that. There is a village tree planting program, which encourages village residents to plant trees on their property. And then the village provides, not total, but partial reimbursement for trees that are planted. So, and I think we talked last time, but it seemed like you could connect those two things in this case here. So if you want to, you can get ahold of Jody. I think she has all the details for it. I don't know if it's actually out on the website. I'm sure it is somewhere on the website.
It is on the website, but it's easier just calling here and talking to Jody.
Yeah, so, so if you, if you, if you call, you know, sometime during business hours, Jody will be here and she can give you the details of it. There are some requirements of it about how far it has to be from the center line of the road. There's a pre-approved list of trees, so it has to be one of the items on that list in order to get the reimbursement for it. But I would say, let's do that in, at the next meeting, knowing that I think probably most of this is straightened out. We could have a resolution ready to, to vote on.
I have a resolution with the quantity of trees as per Village Code for the frontage that you have available. And, and I have a condition in there about the septic system or service system.
So we're gonna make the condition that those trees be planted, or that he adds some money?
There's a choice of either one, either.
Because I don't see a point in planting.
He's not gonna be able to plant the trees now, yeah. So, right, yeah. And he wouldn't be able to, well, now wouldn't be the best time to do it, sure. You could go plant a tree, however. Yeah, so I would say we make it a condition that it happens after the...
Nice.
After the sewer goes in.
Then give me, give me a time, give me a time. June 1st, what do you want to do? Give me a time for this.
You said the sewer's, the sewer is going along his side of the road?
The sewer is going along his side, I believe.
And it'll dig up any plant, any trees that get planted, I'm assuming.
So, so I could just do that, like conditionally, after the sewer goes through?
Unless the sewer doesn't go through until, say, there's a delay in December of next year. So we might want to think just how, how to phrase that condition, so that it happens at, you know, appropriate planting time of year after the sewer's gone in.
I mean, I, another point I think would be that there's a lot of road frontage there. So I think, I mean, I'm not gonna need 30 trees. So I think there's, there's a, there's a good, there's a good chance that I, I wouldn't be anywhere near where the sewer is going to connect. You know, I wouldn't be, I don't think I'd have to end up digging any planted trees up. I think it'd be pretty safe to say.
That I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. That's the thing, yeah. Yeah, I don't know, Zach, how much room that they're go, I mean, they're not supposed to go out of the right of way, but who knows?
Right, right.
Something that's sensitive, well, when it has a new tree and there's construction around it.
Sure, that's a good point.
Another option, can you do, have them set aside an escrow or something like that? Just for the amount of trees you have there. And then when it comes time to plant them, boom, here's your escrow, put the trees in, or put the trees in, here's your escrow. Just something simple like that.
Yeah, I think an escrow would probably be the easiest way to do this without getting concerned about the sewer timeline. And then whenever you do put the trees in, you get your escrow money back and you get the credit from the village for planting the trees.
Okay, so I'll check in. First of all, I'll determine how many trees you are going to need for your frontage. And I'll send you an email, Zach, and then I'll, I believe we have it so that the DPW determines the amount.
That's for the tree bank.
That's for the tree bank.
But I mean, I guess use that.
What if Zach comes up with a...
Yeah, if Zach comes up with an estimate, that's fine.
We may have to have you go someplace and have an estimate of how many trees, like I gotta have six trees in, get an estimate from somebody. We'll have you put that money into an escrow, and then that can be used for the trees, whenever time comes.
Okay, and, and what will the number be?
That determines what your estimate comes out, or the number of trees, or the amount of money.
No, the, the amount of trees in the front, near the road.
Yeah, Mike will figure it out for you.
I'll figure that out for you, Zach.
Okay, gotcha.
And I just want to clarify that we don't need the DPW estimate, because the tree bank is planting by the village. And these are where Scott, Zach would be planting his own trees. So that's why we're bringing Scott to get his own estimate.
Okay. Did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Except Zach, except his name is Zach.
Oh, yeah, well, I know Natalie knows that, because she created the law.
I was gonna say.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Wow, I mean...
Went through it with a fine tooth, man.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I didn't understand something. When, when Zach was explaining option one, which was to get a conversion permit, I, I didn't understand that he had to absolutely add an additional septic. How did, how does that, it sounds, it's almost like a perk test, that it was if he needed to, because I mean, the current one is not sufficient? Was that the point? It's, the current one is not sufficient?
I, I think because the, the rating, the, the rating technically right now is for 300 gallons a day, and what is required by the town of, the, I'm sorry, Tompkins County Health Department, the current calculation would be 330. And because it's close, they wouldn't make you put in a new septic. They would just want to know that if it wasn't adequate, that you have the space to put a new septic in.
Okay, that's what I understood. So that you don't necessarily have to do that unless there's an issue. And then you can make a determination as to which way you want to go when the sewer goes through, so to speak?
I believe so. Is that how, Mike, Mike, you interpreted it?
Yes. From what you're explaining, from the email I got from Scott, it doesn't seem to be much of an issue, to be honest with you.
Yeah, that's what I, I was just wanting to be sure. That's kind of what I was thinking, but I wanted to be sure I understood. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so Zach, I think you've got what you need to, to work with Mike on between now and the next meeting, if you're available. We only do have one meeting in December. We canceled the second meeting because of the holidays. So if you can make it back by then, we can potentially have a resolution ready to, to vote on and maybe get it all done before the holidays.
Oh, that'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Okay. So, but work with Mike, and hopefully we'll see you on the agenda at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks, Zach.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to continue the public hearing for the final plat of cluster subdivision proposal number 2021-4464 by Beer Properties LLC. Beer Properties LLC and Hunt Engineers are providing a final plat of cluster subdivision for property parcel number 45.2-1-47.2, which consists of approximately 40 acres of vacant land between Craft Road and Bush Lane. Have an update for us. Nobody from Beers is here tonight, obviously, or online.
To make this somewhat short and sweet, what David needs to do at this point is there's criteria in the subdivision code of what a major subdivision plat requires. He has got to conform to that and bring that back to the planning board so that you're able to vote yes or no on on accepting that. At that point, he cannot, the planning board cannot sign that plat until he comes up with another section of criteria which has the estimates for the infrastructure, it has a letter of credit and so on and so on. But he has the time to do that. In in my discussion with David, he was concerned that he would be rushed to start this project. And with the this time of year with the weather and the way the economy is, he doesn't know whether he's going to be able to start this like boom in the spring or whether he's gonna have to wait till the spring after. But as far as the planning board is concerned, you're just gonna be waiting for him to come back with a final plat that has all the engineering on it. And then you'll look at that. I'm sure you'll get a report or you'll hear from Brent Cross, you'll hear from Donnie Harner and then and John Courtney, that everything is okay, and then it's up to you to vote at that point. So like I said, the majority of work right now is on David's side to get with our engineers and get a final plat organized. Hopefully I explained that okay. No, but.
We advised David not to come to this meeting.
Yes.
And I believe they plan to try to be back in January.
Yes, Natalie, myself, David and Ray Flather were all on the same page on it.
Any questions for Mike on any of that? Okay. On to other business. So discussion of proposal Laurela with the holidays and everything and lives and children and everyone in the world being sick. Lisa and Carol and I didn't get a chance to meet. I did send them the full blown New York State guidance on solar, the model solar law. So hopefully we can meet at least once, hopefully twice in December and come back in January with something more fleshed out. And that's on my plate to schedule, by the way, Lisa. But you should, but I think you got the document that I sent you and Carolyn?
Yeah, I did, but you're right about the holidays and whatnot. So I have not really looked at. But I do think that at some point, maybe we have to really get it in front of the full board and maybe make some time at each meeting to start going through it.
Yeah.
Because it is complicated and we don't want to, you know, keep spinning our wheels and keep delaying it.
Yep, yeah, I think after we've met, hopefully, hopefully, after one more, one or two more times of us meeting, we'll at least know where the the kind of the the big discussion points are. And there's going to be some for you, Mike, and some for you, Natalie, obviously, to take a look at. And then for the rest of the board to kind of make some decisions about the direction that we would think is appropriate to head for the village with them. So but we can, but Lisa and Lisa and Carol and I have a whole ton of examples of, you know, like Lisa said, where we've been spinning our wheels and talking about them. So those are the important parts of the of the law that I think everybody else here will will want to provide some input to. So other things other under other things under other business that people wanted to bring up. We still have the trustee report. Trustee report.
Okay, well, continue on in the beginning of tonight's meeting. Nothing terribly exciting. They did pass, they opened and closed the public hearing for the subdivision of code change we submitted and passed that. And the same for the Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code. So both of those things are now local laws. Other than that, there was discussion about a new pickup plow. And that was it was deferred for more information. And honestly, that was about it, except for some sort of discussion. Why do I have golden raisin and sourdough? There was something about a
She's saying golden raisin and sourdough? Is that what she said?
There was some, just so I mean, at that point, that was all there was in the mayor's comments with general discussion about this recipe. And there was also some discussion about someone who wanted to have a waiver of some fees. And I I think they decided to grant part of the request, but not entirely. So the meeting ended at eight twelve, so it was pretty short and sweet. That was it. I don't think there was anything of of real note for us other than the fact that the two things that we submitted, you know, for local law passage were indeed passed.
Okay. One of the things that I did want to bring up, Yemila, Yemila or Yemila?
I was gonna ask, yeah.
So so I know you can't see her, but she is here. So has been coming for a couple of meetings. And at the last meeting, we had talked about potentially having a discussion tonight. We didn't know what was ultimately going to end up on the agenda and how long those things were going to take. But we do have some extra time. If you wanted to have a chat with us, if you're comfortable, we can just kind of have a discussion with you tonight. I've mentioned a couple of times, we just like to hear a little bit about you and I think people know a little bit already, but and then just give a chance for any board members to ask questions before we take the next steps. But she's interested in becoming an alternate on the board on the board in case anybody doesn't remember why she's been coming to all the meetings, either in person or online. But yeah, if you if you want to, we've got some extra time, that'd be great.
Yeah, great. So my name is Yubila Fornay.
Do you actually want to step up? If you stand right there, we can actually switch the camera over. Yeah, we got it. Okay, now everybody can see you.
Hey there. So my name is Yubila Fornay. And once upon a time, I was in Lisa's driveway, talking to Lisa and Deb, and they're like, you want to be on the planning board? At the time, we had made some different plans for what was gonna happen in the next couple of years of our life, but that changed. And so now we are, we are here and we are staying. We were originally thinking about moving, but things have changed. So we are putting down roots and staying put. So we said that would be a great time to go ahead and actually get more involved. So I said, yeah, sure, I'd love to be part of this. So for my background and why I'm interested in the kinds of things that planning boards talk about is I'm a landscape architect and planner in the city of Ithaca for wood and planning and design. So I'm usually the one who's coming to a planning board meeting with projects and such. So I usually see it from the other side. But it means that I've gotten some really I've actually really enjoy the process. And I know not everybody enjoys it. It's a certain it's a certain flavor of folks who like to go through these kinds of things, and I happen to be one of them. So I enjoy the process. I enjoy how what happens at a planning board can really guide the way a community develops. And I think that's really important for lots of different reasons. For, you know, first of all, there's climate change reasons. There's the way we build our communities, the way we interact with each other, the way we are kind or not kind to each other. A lot of that are actually like down to design decisions. So being part of a board that helps guide some of those things, I think is important to me.
Great, thanks, Yumila. With that, I will open it up to the board members to ask questions, starting with Lisa, because she always has good insightful questions.
I was gonna let everybody else go first. Well, I actually, you've already had some discussions with Yumila, yes. I guess the real, you know, the fact is, is your your history and your experience, you already know that some of this stuff can get unpleasant and difficult at times. But you also know that the process is usually, I mean, the code kind of guides that. And so some of our decisions are are not well received. But it's the code. And so, you know, that's it. But I was gonna say, usually the one question that always has been asked and asked is, do you have a specific? You know, is there some thing that you really would like to see the village do or not do?
You know, honestly, I think the village has done a really good job at developing with pedestrians in mind, with community in mind, with connectivity in mind. As clearly as the sewer is going in, there's gonna be some opportunities coming up for nodal development. And how we how we guide those developments is gonna make a big difference in how the village works. The other thing, too, that I think is on a lot of people's minds is what's gonna happen as the mall continues to decline? There's a giant piece of property there, and it'd be really interesting to see, you know, some some interesting things happen with that kind of space. You know, both in terms of a tax revenue point of view, but also in terms of community development. But that's kind of a little ways off, I bet. That's, you know, years and years of thinking.
I don't know. It's almost empty, so they need to start moving fast.
Okay, thanks. Other questions from folks?
So I'm just curious, how long have you lived in the area? Are you?
Yep, so we moved, let's see, so I lived in New York City for many, many years, and I went to grad school in Syracuse from two thousand four to two thousand eight. And when we were in grad school in Syracuse, we'd come down to this area all the time because there's frankly, even though it's a tenth of the size, there's more to do and and more restaurants and all that kind of stuff to go to. So we spent a lot of time coming here during that period. After grad school, we went back to the city and worked at a firm for a little bit and decided that, you know what, we actually really like Tompkins County. And we decided to leave the city altogether in Tompkins County. So I was in the city of Ithaca from two thousand ten through two thousand fifteen. And two thousand fifteen, bought a house just a few doors down from Lisa. And so I've been in the village since two thousand fifteen.
So you've been here quite a while.
Long enough to
Get a taste of the whole area. Yeah.
Pat or Jim?
I don't have any questions. I think the other questions, and I think our candidate has explained things pretty well, so I have no questions.
Okay. I I always rely on Lisa to ask insightful questions. And she always steals the one that I would ask anyway. So and you answered some of the interest. So I know I don't have anything else. I think I think that, you know, that's kind of exactly the sort of information that we're looking for. So if people are comfortable, I would love to take a vote and just if people want to propose to the Board of Trustees to make an appointment as a as Yemila for a alternate member, I will entertain a motion.
I would be happy to make that motion.
Motion by Lisa.
A second.
Second by Lorraine. Call in favor. Great. So I will likely tonight, if not tonight, tomorrow, I'll send a note along to the mayor and the and the trustees to recommend that they appoint you as a alternate member to the planning board. And if they, so they will do that. I don't know when their next meeting is. No.
Yes.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So potentially, wow, that's good. They might be able to fit it on the agenda. I don't know what else they have. But you don't have to be there. You can, if you want to be there, will they will they talk about it? You can be, you can join Zoom, you can be in person. But if they do, if they do accept our recommendation, Jody will be in touch with you to move on to the next steps, which is
They might, they might have questions that they want to ask.
Yeah, I don't know if they I don't know if they typically do. But yeah, so I mean, I would I would obviously encourage you to go to the trustees' meetings anyway. They're usually pretty quick, as long as it's not budget season. There you go. You can you can all the inside information.
Get the reviews on how it went for Thanksgiving.
Right, well, thank you so much.
They have asked me a question or two.
Yeah, they might. Okay, that's the last thing on the agenda. So I'll go around. Pat, do you have anything you wanted to bring up?
I just wanted to mention to Mike that, you know, Lorraine had commented about the traffic light at BOMAX and Warren. Went over and checked it out and said it was fine. I got stuck there for a second time the other day.
You know what I think it is? Why I think it worked for you? Because you have a truck. I think I think there's something about sensor, the sensor. Because it's not, it's still not working for me either. But I didn't want to tell you that because I figured you thought I'd be
Well, Jack Corby said it worked for him also, but
He drive a truck? He drive a truck?
I was gonna say, I have a truck and it always works for me too, so.
Or like my my little Chevy Bolt and, you know.
We get to one of those little like, what is it, one of the little kinds of little
I will tell you, if you're leaving the post office and it's red, the minute you get up to the immediately turns. So what usually what I have seen is there's a line, not a line, but a few cars at BOMAX. And all of a sudden, somebody will leave the post office and it turns and then but if not, you're stuck there unless you have a truck. Or I think it depends which lane were you in? Were you in the lane to go straight over to the post office or make a right? Or were you in the left hand lane to go make a left on Warren?
I was making a right, so.
Oh, okay.
It's been a truck.
When I get back, Lorraine, I'll take our Camry over and see what
Oh, okay.
I was gonna say, I'm not a good test driver.
And Pat, I also shared with them that the the Beers property, I happened to drive by that Wednesday morning, last Wednesday morning, when the activity was happening, when they were removing.
Oh, did they remove the boat?
The boat and the RV. Oh, yeah. It all happened at eight AM. They were out there jumping the vehicles.
So, yeah, Brendan.
I don't want your arm to get tired.
Thank you. On the topic of this, the traffic light, I guess I previously might have envisioned the wrong one. You're referring to the one at BOMAX and Warren?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's a county owned facility. So, you know, the village really doesn't have anything to say about that or even to to do about it. So any of your concerns, we should figure out a way to get those up the ladder to the county because, you know, there's just, John doesn't have any you know, he he wouldn't be able to help. Even if we thought we knew what the problem was, he wouldn't be able to do anything about it.
Is there somebody there we can pass comments on to?
John was already gonna check. He was already gonna check and see. He had a contact or something he was gonna look at or give a call to to find out if it was actually working properly.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Brendan. Is there stuff there? Lorraine?
One more thing, and I don't know if this is really appropriate, but I have noticed lately that things are getting bad over in the Cuba Mall mobile gas station area.
Which one is that one?
The one on this.
Yeah, the Econo Lodge.
Oh, in the, oh, the the one over right up there.
Oh, sorry.
And the gas station's that way?
Three times now, I've gone to the mobile. And there's something going on there. And I was there Thanksgiving morning to get gas at like, I don't know, nine AM. And I thought there was gonna be a friggin shootout in the parking lot. And there was like multiple people. And those of us that were at the pumps had to back out. It got really bad. And I was like, just finish pumping your gas and get the heck out of here.
Give me a call tomorrow.
Okay.
Not that I can do anything, but
Well, I mean, I didn't know if other people have been complaining about it.
At least I can put in a complaint or a concern and then get ahold of the proper people.
I mean, and I don't think, I mean, I don't think they're coming, these are, I mean, I don't know, they were in vehicles, so I don't think, I don't know, maybe they're living in Econo Lodge, but they were driving like nice vehicles, but it was
I can make a call tomorrow because, you know.
Yeah, right at the very least, you know, we can get on the sheriff's and if anything, I can do that, so.
Yeah, yeah. They definitely needed police presence there that day, that morning.
Anything else, right?
Nope, that's it.
Lisa?
No, I'm good.
Hey, Jim?
No, I don't have anything.
Mike? Any updates on?
I did go past the new VA. They said that they are doing the build out in there, so.
The VA is looking to, well, both the VA and the Alcohol and Drugs Center are looking early to mid December.
Okay.
To open up. The, I'm in the process of issuing the due to medicals building permit, so they're anxious to get going on that.
Have they started? I know that the fence is up around the area. Have they done anything?
They went in, they got it.
Okay. Okay. Oh, that's great, because you mentioned that the the sprinkler risers had to be moved or changed.
So no, they should be starting soon, which I'm hoping does help the you know, does help the mall brings, leads some people back to it, helps the food court. If the food court comes back, maybe if some of the other places will come back.
Yep.
We'll see.
Last but not least.
I don't have anything.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn at seven fifty one PM. Oh, sorry, Carla.
I came in a little late and missed the public comment period. I'm Carla Marso, and I'm here as an observer for the community party.
Hey, Carla. Okay, still seven fifty one PM.